Good evening and thank you for being here. Before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to invite Ashley Drake-Mertz up from Grace First Presbyterian Church. I got it right today. She's going to lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Let us pray. Grant, O God, that your holy and life-giving Spirit may so move every human heart, that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatreds cease; that our divisions, being healed, we may live in peace. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in this city your Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In all we do, we seek to honor and glorify you and all you have created. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Counsel, at 6:30 PM at this time, we're going to call the meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum present. All council members here this evening. A little bit of a special night tonight. We're going to recognize and celebrate Recognized Veterans Day. Major Lamb and Staff Sergeant Cox are here tonight with the United States Marine Corps to post the colors. If you'd please rise.
Ready, face. Forward, march. Up, down, face.
Councilman Jeff Robinson is going to lead us now in the United States in Texas pledges.
If you would please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
That was a good job. Counsel, at this time, I would ask for your flexibility in the agenda. We are going to rotate items five and four. We're going to move down to the podium for a brief presentation by our friends from the United States Marine Corps.
Sir, thank you very much. Counsel of Weatherford, thank you, guys. Everybody in this room, thank you so much. Very humbled, very honored to be here for, you know, you guys allowing me to do this. Mayor, we've done a lot of few things in the past, and I love working with you and everybody in the city of Weatherford. So with that being the case, I'd like to present you and the city of Weatherford with a gift from myself and the Marines of Recruiting Substation Weatherford, just as a kind of a token of our gratitude.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Can you hold the other side? Y'all step in and let's take a picture. Thank you so much. I think we've been presented some really neat things since I've been mayor, but this is by all means the most meaningful. Thank you so much. How about a round of applause for all our veterans? And thank you both for your service to our country. Thank you very much. Set this right here. Melinda, where do you want me to put this?
Maybe just put it right up against the dais. That way it doesn't get knocked over. Yeah, turn it around.
All right.
That'd be better.
Don't make me get out and do this, but we're going to stay up here now. Hey, thank y'all very much for being here. We certainly appreciate it. One more round of applause for these fine United States Marines. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, counsel, we're going to go to 5A under Presentations and Proclamations. The proclamation naming November the 5th of 2021 as Arbor Day in the city of Weatherford. Counsel member Tiscus is going to present that proclamation.
Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore Paul Pascal, the mayor of the city of Weatherford, Texas, does hereby proclaim November 5th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Weatherford, Texas, and he urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Counselman Tiscus, I did not do that on purpose to you, but for you, Mayor Protem, I'm going to turn the microphone on. It's a presentation, proclamation naming November the 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in the city of Weatherford. Mayor Protem.
The city council of Weatherford, Texas hereby proclaims November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day, whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by the people of the United States, and whereas the system of civilian control of the armed forces makes it essential that the future leaders of the nation understand the history of the military action and the contributions and sacrifices of those who conduct such actions. Now therefore, the Weatherford City Council does hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in the city of Weatherford, and encourages the people of Weatherford to show their thanks and gratitude to our local veterans. May God continue to bless America in testimony whereof witnessed by the mayor and the seal of the city of Weatherford this 26th day of October 2021.
Gentlemen from the American Legion, if y'all would come forward and be presented, please. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Appreciate that.
And we would love to get a couple photographs with y'all. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Let's take a few pictures. Do y'all mind? All righty. Let's get everybody settled here. All right. Thank you. How about a round of applause for the American Legion folks here? Thank y'all so much. Appreciate it.
I was wondering, if the Marine Corps, when they, you might look in the back of there, there might be a 12-week vacation in 29 Palms. You're coming up pretty early.
I wouldn't be physically or mentally eligible for that, sir. I promise you. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. At this time, counsel, we're going to move back up to the dais, and Mr. Hotop's going to come down for 5C, which is an Employee Service Award.
Somebody had to use it at some point.
Mr. Hotop, thanks for your patience, Will, sir.
You bet. So here tonight to recognize a 25-year employee, Mr. Troy Garvin. Come on forward, Troy.
You sure?
Yeah. So maybe I'll lower it just a little bit. So Troy started with the city of Weatherford, November 13th, 1996, as a utility engineering technician in the Technical Services Department, which actually doesn't even exist anymore. He was promoted in November 1998 to Senior Utilities Engineering Technician. April of 1999, he was promoted to Engineering Computer Support Specialist, which is really when the growth of the computer department or IT department really started here at the city of Weatherford. And then in November 2001, he became the GAS Computer Support Supervisor. And really, you can give Troy credit for getting the city into the 21st century, literally. So in October of 2004, he became the Technical Services Supervisor, which is really when a lot of those operations across the city were formalized, and really responsible for the fact of the development of the GAS system that we see and take for granted for just the common functionality that it has nowadays, that has become commonplace. In May 2009, Troy was promoted to the Director of Information Technologies. It's almost hard to believe that we didn't have an IT director prior to that time based on the size of city that we were. Easiest way to put what the IT department is, is they're responsible for every piece of software, every device, every computer, every phone, everything electronically we have here across the city of Weatherford, they're responsible for, including probably one of the most important things is network security, which is one of the growing issues all across the country. Overall, Troy is responsible for, and we have this discussion on a continual basis, all the devices that we have across the city of Weatherford, that's with all of our personal devices and computers, that number's over 1,400. He's the Director of a department of eight, and one of their department goals is to connect people with technology through innovative solutions, responsive communications, and accessible information. I think you will all agree, they certainly do that. And aside from being a technical expert, I would tell you Troy is probably hands down the most qualified person that I've ever met at hiring qualified professionals, and I think you see that with everyone that we have in our IT department. And through the years, the department has actually evolved from just eight-to-five department to 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year operation. We've actually seen that, Troy and I, along with several other IT folks, have spent time together when we had the issue at the water plant back in 2010, and more recently in February with the winter storm. We spent a lot of time together down at the Public Works Utility Service Center. Troy and his wife Tracy have three daughters, one of which is married and has a granddaughter. He enjoys time hunting and also diving. He's been several spots around the world. He donates a lot of his time to his home church of Northside Baptist. He is also a very active member in, as the Board of Directors at Weatherford Christian School. So please join me in congratulating my colleague and friend, Troy Garvin, for 25 years of service.
Counsel, we're going to roll back up to item four on the agenda, which is Items of Community Interest. Mr. Hotop?
So just a couple of things to note. Of course, Halloween events coming up. We did have the extremely successful Jack-o'-lantern nights, and for any of y'all that went out to that, we had almost 1,400 folks that went through that at Shandor Gardens, first-class event. I know I saw Councilman Tiscus there on Saturday night. Park County Animal Shelter is doing the Truck or Treat event, October 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00, and then Trick or Treat on York Street, October 30th, from 1:00 to 5:00. We do have, as was noted with the proclamation, Arbor Day. We have an Arbor Day event where we're hosting that November 5th, from 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM. Weatherford College is hosting the Coyote Race at Weatherford College on November 13th at 9:00 AM, and we do have one new employee to introduce you to, and that's Kevin Dozer. He is our Fire Marshal for the city of Weatherford, and he has been sworn in, and we welcome him. He and his wife relocated from Webster, and so new to the city of Weatherford family, so welcome aboard.
Welcome, sir. All right, counsel, any items of community interest? All right, we'll go down to item six, which is Consent Agenda Items. We have 6A through 6I. Could hear those as a body, or are there any you'd like to entertain individually? Motion by Councilman Cleveland to entertain approval for 6A through 6I. Second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on this pool of items before we move forward and take a vote? All right, let's boot on. 6A through 6I. Please indicate yea or nay. Those pass 5-0. Item seven on the agenda is Public Hearings. 7A is Discuss and Hold a Public Hearing to Receive Public Comments on Proposed Amendments to the 2016 Water and Wastewater Impact Fee Program. Mr. Rick Shafer.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, Rick Shafer with Water Utilities. The item tonight is to hold a public hearing for updates to the 2016 Water and Wastewater Impact Fee Program, which the Texas Local Government Code requires that we update at least once every five years. So tonight, we have with us John Atkins from Kimley Horn Associates. That's our consultant that's helped us through this process. He's here to make a brief presentation to the council before you open the public hearing. With that, I will also mention that we've worked with the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, which this council appointed earlier this year in developing these updates to this program, and have their support, and we've also presented this information to the Utility Board and received their recommendation of approval as well. So tonight, we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll actually bring this back for formal adoption and adoption of an ordinance at the next city council meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Atkins.
Thank you, Rick. Mayor, councilmembers, let's begin. Okay, the key components here of the impact fee update is really a four-step process. There's a planning step, an analysis step, policy step, and adoption. We're right at the policy step transition tonight to give you the information here, make a policy decision, and then there's an update at the next meeting. There's two or three main boards here in Weatherford that review the process. The first is the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. Every city in the state of Texas that updates impact fees has to appoint an advisory committee that reviews both the land use assumptions, the impact fee capital improvement plan, and then gives recommendations on the impact fees themselves. Then also here, there's a secondary step with the Public Utility Board, which has also reviewed the same information, and then that same information is brought forward again for the council to do their final review and then ultimately make the recommendation on what you want to do as far as moving forward with the impact fees, either keep them where they are today or move to the new maximum rate that we will present later in the presentation. Okay, little brief history on what impact fees are. It's a one-time fee just to new development that comes to town. It's a mechanism to recover infrastructure cost required to serve that future development. And what it does, it gives the city the freedom and flexibility to spend that money on priority projects within a broad service area. So you can collect money all across the city, but you can then spend that money in key projects throughout the city, and we'll show you the service area boundary here in a minute. Okay, steps, the land use assumptions and develop it at the impact fee capital improvements plan. One thing that we do is we don't create or look at brand-new information. We lean on y'all's current documents that have already been vetted through the system and come before you guys. The first thing is the general plan, which talks about the land use assumptions, and then for the impact fees, CIPs, we lean on your master plans, both your water master plans, which were done in 2013 and 2017, and then also your wastewater master plan that was done in 2017. Okay, one thing that we formally have to show you in here is your service area boundary. So the boundary is the same, but we do have to split them out between water and wastewater. So what you see here in the blue is the water, and then wastewater is kind of light green you see here. Okay, the next thing on the land use is we look at your growth projections. And our study period is just a 10-year window, starting from 2021 to 2031, and looking back at your general plan, it shows a growth rate of about 2.5% on average, and that's what we leaned on for this particular study. Okay, this is your wastewater impact fee capital improvement plan. So these are growth-related projects. Yes, you have other project capital improvement plans in the city for doing rehabilitation of your infrastructure, but the things you will see in this map are strictly growth-related. The ones in green are existing projects that have additional capacity already in them that are eligible for recovery, and then the ones you see in red are future projection projects based on the growth that we talked about a little bit earlier. Water, this is the same type of map, but it focuses in on the water projects. You see you've got much more existing projects, the ones in blue here for water. So you've oversized some infrastructure that's already in the ground. There's some recoverable value in those that we want to present, and then the red is similar to the wastewater study where future projects and anticipated growth areas are shown. Okay, the impact fee study itself, there's a lot that goes in that. One of the foundational things that we have to determine and talk about is what a service unit is. That's the measure that we're charged for impact fees. The definition that comes out of the law is written here. It's a standardized measure of consumption attributable to an additional unit of development. What does that mean? The bottom line is that foundational unit of development, if you think about water demand in the city, how do you measure that? It's the size of the water meter that's used for each type of development. Y'all's base meter, which serves typical residential development, is a 3/4-inch meter, so that's the base service unit that we use here in Weatherford. Okay, there's a calculation. We've got a table here. I don't want you to try to worry about all the numbers on here, but if you look at the kind of the beige colors in the middle, where you see a kind of a long title there under the service area, it says total recoverable cost of impact fee CIP plus debt service minus credit for utility revenues. That is the value that's eligible for recovery over the next 10 years with a little over $10 million for water, almost $10 million in wastewater, and then we talked about those additional service units over the next 10 years. We assume the $44.93 in water and $44.72 in wastewater. When you divide those two numbers together, you get your new maximum assessable fee, which is the, which you see kind of in the orange color at the bottom, that's the key number that comes out of the study. And that is a new maximum fee for a 3/4-inch meter for water being the $23.32, and for wastewater is the $22.27. And we'll show you how that value compares to your current value, your current impact fee along with some of your neighboring cities here in just a second. So a quick example, if a, this is an example of a, if a general office building of 10,000 square foot came into the city and they were selecting a 1.5-inch meter to serve their development, it shows an example of what their fee would be as compared to a 3/4-inch meter. You look across the table there that's boxed in red, you'll see the 1.5-inch meter, and then you, the third unit over, it shows it's 3.33 times bigger than your 3/4-inch meter. Therefore, the value they would pay would be 3.33 times more than if a 3/4-inch base meter came in. So we just wanted to show you a little example of variance based on meter size. Okay, here's the, what it all rolls down to is right here. This graph right here, it looks a little bit busy, but what you see is that cities across the bottom in the area, in the north central Texas area, that all have impact fees, and then it shows the blue bar is what their water impact fee is, and then the green bar above it that's stacked on top of it is what their wastewater fee is, and then the very top number above each of those bars is the maximum fee, or the fee that each of those communities pay. Pay, sorry about that. What you see a little bit over to the right, it's Weatherford's current fee that's kind of shaded and boxed in the highlighted green bars with a total right now of $3,996. What was being recommended by the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee is to pay the maximum fee that we just talked about, and that would total to $4,559. So that's, that's the number that's coming before you today for consideration and recommendation from both the CIC and the MUB to move forward with. I think, here's schedule, just overall, to let you know we're in the process, you can see the five meetings that have already taken place before you, and then today's the one highlighted in red, which is the 26th, and which is the council public hearing on the impact fee, impact fee study and the maximum assessable fee. So I think that is it. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to go back to a slide, or y'all can just move on to public.
Any questions on 7A before we have a public hearing? No action is required. We're just going through a public process. Thank you, sir, for being here. Appreciate it. Counsel, we're going to open a public hearing on item 7A. If there's anybody that'd like to come forward on this item specifically, please come forward this time. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on 7A. Counsel, again, there's no action required this evening. I'd like to go ahead and shift down to 7B, if that's okay with you. 7B is to hold a public hearing, consider adoption of ordinance O2021-58, a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo studio at 110 College Park Drive, city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, CUP 2021-0008. Mr. Kentner.
Mayor and council, you have in your packets the complete staff report that went before the Planning Commission at their October 13th, 2021 regular meeting. This went for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they unanimously recommended with all four present approval of the conditional use permit subject to the seven conditions as outlined in your staff report, and staff is here available to answer any questions you might have regarding this request. And this is a public hearing.
Counsel, there are items listed in the agenda reports. Are there any questions or conversation needed on those items? Would you like Mr. Kentner to run through those items? Would you mind doing that, sir?
You bet.
Okay.
So the conditions, as outlined in the conditional use permit are, item one, hours of operations will be limited to 9:00 AM, 10:00 PM. Item two is window signage, glass tinting, or frosting, and other storefront displays will not exceed 20% of the area's storefront. Exterior signs shall be limited to one wall sign, signage on a legally permitted monument or pole sign. And four, no neon flashing or moving signs are permitted. Item five is no art or product is to be displayed outside of the building. Item six, full compliance with the applicable conditions, ordinances must be maintained. If a third violation notice is issued within the 18-month period, all operations must cease until compliance is met. And item seven is this conditional use permit will be void if not completed one year, or if abandoned, more than 180 days. You'll recognize items six and seven are standard items, and the other items are what we've based off of previous conditional use requests specifically for tattoos.
Thank you for that, sir. Any questions for staff on this?
On the hours, is the hours Monday through Sunday, it's 9:00 AM to 10:00, or?
Yeah, the, this is just the hours of operation. If they choose to do seven days a week, I would defer that to the applicant as far as how many days actually, but this would be if they're open seven days a week, it would be 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Great question. Any others? Counsel, we need to have a public hearing on this item. Okay, if we proceed with the public hearing. Okay, thank you, sir. This time, we will open the floor for a public hearing on item 7B. We do have one speaker card on the item, and then we will also allow people to come up from the floor if they're here to speak on this item. Stephanie Jones, Stephanie, are you with us? Come forward. How are you? Once you get settled at the podium, if you would let us have your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your presentation. So you fill out the speaker card. So you're going to do the presentation?
I did.
Okay, super.
I did. My name is Stephanie Jones. I reside at 15100 Gladstone Drive in Alito, Texas.
Did you have any information you wanted to share with us, or are you just available to answer questions, or?
I have both.
Okay.
First, hello, city council. My name, of course, is Stephanie Jones. This is my husband, Cameron Jones. We are the owners of Old Souls, Inc. We're here tonight before you, pursuing our dream of opening up our first business. Cameron and I are conservative Christian members of this community, looking to spread our passion for both tattoos and Christ through the opening of our first tattoo studio. Some background here, Cameron and I have been together 27 years, so we are two partners in this endeavor. Cameron is a disabled veteran of the United States Air Force and currently an engineer at Lockheed Martin. I have a background in finance, and I currently work... I have a background in finance, and I currently work here as a service advisor at Caliber Collision. We reside in the local area, and we attend Parker County Cowboy Church. We've identified a spot for our business on College Park, which is why we're here tonight. College Park is both trendy and upscale, providing the perfect location for our business venture. As societal stigmas around tattoos are deteriorating at a rapid pace, more and more people are choosing tattoos as a form of self-expression. Forty-five million Americans have tattoos right now. Thirty percent of those are college graduates. Forty percent of those are aged 25 to 40. Thirteen percent of baby boomers have at least one tattoo. 1.65 billion, that's the amount of money Americans are spending right now on tattoos. Tattoos are fastly becoming the new normal. Our business, and more importantly, the location we've chosen, is perfectly positioned to welcome this influx of business and maturing clientele. From our building facade to our signage to our lobby, you know that you're not seeing the shady, seedy tattoo parlor of old. At Old Souls Inc., you're entering the new upscale world of body art. People young and old will feel at home as they peruse our inventory of local artists' clothing and jewelry along with portfolios of artists' work. Our hours will accommodate every generation while discouraging reckless behavior. We intend to be open Tuesday through Saturday from noon until 10:00 p.m. We will not tolerate nor do business with those under the influence or under legal age. I will manage operations and be the face of the studio. Cameron will be bringing his years of practice to the studio as one of our artists. We want to bring business to Weatherford while maintaining a standard of quality, ethics, and our mutual love for Jesus. We hope that you agree with us tonight and approve our endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Would you be willing to answer any questions that council might have?
Absolutely.
And before that, Cameron, it would be only fitting to thank you for your service, sir. I'm glad you're here tonight for our Veterans Day recognition.
Yeah, very nice.
Any questions for applicants tonight, council?
She answered my question. Thank you.
Are y'all fully aware and have a full understanding of all seven requirements that are, that are listed?
Absolutely.
Are there any questions that you have on any of those?
None at all.
Any reluctance or concern about not being able to meet those?
They, they actually fit in line with what we had in mind to begin with.
Okay, great. Just like to make sure everybody has a complete understanding of that.
No, absolutely.
Anything else? Thank y'all so much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
We still have the public hearing open on 7B. Is there anybody from the floor that would like to speak on this item specifically? If so, please come forward this time. 7B, public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, council. Any discussion, questions for staff? It's an action item. Planning and zoning did approve the item as presented.
Make a motion to approve with the seven.
Motion by Councilman Cleveland to approve with the seven conditions that are listed by staff. Is there a second? Second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on 7B before we call for a vote? Let's vote on it. Please indicate yea or nay at this time. That item passes. Remove the 7C on the agenda, which is to hold a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance O 2021-56, a request for conditional use permit approval for a self-storage facility at 1319 Santa Fe Drive, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, CUP 2021-0007. Welcome back, sir.
Mayor and council, you have in your packets the complete staff report in regards to this request for a expansion of the existing storage facility located at 1319 Santa Fe Drive. The complete staff report includes nine conditions that were placed on this as it went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their October 13th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the expansion of the self-storage facility subject to all nine conditions. At the October 13th, 2021 regular meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously for O to recommend approval of the conditional use permit subject to the conditions noted in the staff report, with the exception to remove item number five from the list at the request of the applicant. Item number five, as stated in the staff report, is in regards to an item that was listed and referenced into the zoning regulations, which states a minimum of 60% of the new construction associated with the expansion shall be temperature controlled. With air conditioning, heating in accordance with the supplemental conditional use standards of the proposed 62 units, this would require no less than 38 units to be temperature controlled. That was, the Planning Commission's recommendation was to remove that item from those conditions. You have the, as noted, the applicants have met all the requirements. They do intend to place a masonry fence similar to the one in this photo across the front and along, a solid fence on the north side of the structure matching similarly to the existing masonry. And staff's available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions on 7C? Before we have a public hearing, Mr. Kettner, I had a couple, I believe, on the south side, if you will, that borders the bank. The back portion of that is still a chain link fence that would be improved to a solid masonry surface that would be consistent with the bank's material all the way back to the back of the property line?
Actually, what's proposed in the site plan is the fence goes, the masonry fence on both sides extend to the extent of the existing masonry fence that exists right now at the bank. The remainder of the back will remain a chain link fence in the back. And the area to the north will match the same extent as the, the bank's masonry. So it does not go all the way to the back.
Okay. So privacy fence does not necessarily mean that it's private. It means that it's a barrier, but it does not visually block the line of sight completely?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay. Council, thank you for the ability to ask that question.
That, that one kind of catches me up because the plan says proposed six-foot privacy fence, so it's leading site plan to six-foot privacy, privacy to me.
I believe we have a speaker card from the applicant. We might be able to have a conversation about that, and if we need to circle back down with staff, Mr. Cleveland, is that okay? I have the same concern. Any other questions for staff before we have our public hearing? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. This time, we'll have a public hearing on item 7C. This time, we do have a speaker card from Elijah Rining.
Elijah Rining.
Rining, I apologize, sir. Elijah, if you could, once you get up and get settled, if we can have your name and address, and if you can stick as close to three minutes as, as you can, we'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming all the way down from Minnesota, sir.
Thank you for having me, mayor and council members. My name's Elijah Rining. My address is 740 Portland Avenue South in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Thanks for having me today. I will just jump in right away, answering your question about the privacy fence, just to set, set the record straight. The proposed six-foot privacy fence on the back and sides of the property was planned to be a wooden privacy fence common with any home. So it was not to remain a chain link fence or be added a chain link. When I was here a few weeks ago, we, we just kind of jumped into it by saying that we bought this facility with every intention of improving it. A lot of these items that were, that the staff recommended are items that we planned on doing. One of the items, number five, being that we have 60% of the new construction associated with the expansion shall be temperature controlled. We were kind of unaware of that when we purchased the facility with plans to expand it. Adding 60% climate control would be very hard for us to do, and also include these other items such as privacy fence, the stone fence in front, screening, including some trees, new security cameras, gate, and removing that driveway and adding a driveway that would allow for that 40-foot access distance. With that, we requested that we remove that item with every intent to do all the other items that are on here. So I'm open to any questions or recommendations from you guys.
First of all, thank you for being here again. Any questions? Mr. Rining, I apologize.
Right, yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Rining? I've got a couple. Chalk, go ahead. My, my question's on the fence. I, I have a little bit of a concern.
Absolutely.
Certainly understand the climate controlled portion, what that would do, probably to your, your cost benefit analysis and return on investment, not only in amount, but in time it'd take to recoup that. I'm, I'm encouraged to hear that that's a solid surface fence and not a chain link. You did confirm that in your presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I know that there were some questions about wood being allowed on the front, the front side of the property, but on the back, and I believe it's, yeah, the north and south, we planned.
I'm, I'm only talking about the portion that where we stopped with the masonry substance and moved back. I'm going to call it to the east.
Yep.
Okay, can you describe that fence to me in detail, what that would be on both sides of your property?
Yeah, on, on the, on the north, south, and back, we planned on doing a wooden privacy fence, six-foot privacy fence. So it'd be, you know, four-by-fours with a cedar tone slat on it, common with what you'd see around a residential property.
Okay. Would you be willing to do that with poles on the inside?
Absolutely.
Would you be willing to cap the top and give it a little bit better visual appearance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Cleveland, what have I missed?
You got pretty well wrapped up there on the fence.
And, and fairness, our concern, I think, is that we have investors and property owners and business owners on both sides of you that invested a tremendous amount of money really recently, too. And so this is an opportunity for you and your business, but it's an opportunity to improve visual appeal both sides. On the north side, if you will, is a playground area for children.
Yep.
And so to have something that not only visually looks good, provides a solid barrier, I think provides me a little bit more comfort. So just to clarify, moving back from the property on both sides and the rear where the masonry substance stops, it would be a six-foot wood fence sustained, poles on the inside, capped on the top. Is that correct?
It would be a six-foot, poles on the inside with capped poles, wooden fence.
Okay, capped across the top.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? What is your timeframe in completing this, this project?
We'd like to, like to get moving on it as quickly as possible. I have excavators standing by. They're ready to start moving pretty soon as we get through the appropriate approval. I would say that this project shouldn't take any more than four to five months. We can move ahead with exactly what's on here.
Okay. Do you have every intention of doing all the items there in that narrow amount of time?
I do. And actually, in light of the Arbor Day, I would actually like to suggest that we add some trees and everything to the front.
Okay. That'd be a conversation you could have with staff. The reason I ask about the timeframe is item nine requires that you complete that within one year, considering you said four to five months. But you would be more, would you be comfortable with a six to seven month timeline in item nine versus a year?
Let me look at item nine.
Item nine currently reads the conditional use permit will be void if not completed within one year. And so you said six to, five to six months or six to seven months. So would you be comfortable with shortening that timeframe down? What we're trying to do is, is narrow down the, the time period of disruption for the neighboring businesses. How do you feel about that?
I can make that work.
Okay. So what timeframe would you be comfortable with meeting?
Could we do nine with every?
Counsel?
Be careful when you say, we all know the state of the world right now.
Yeah, supply chain and all that right now, I'd be comfortable with nine.
So nine was the number that you said that you're comfortable with?
Absolutely.
Counsel? Good, okay. That's all the questions I had, and I appreciate your clarification.
I had a question about the, the condition space. How, how many units on the current property are conditioned?
You know what? I do not have the unit mix in front of me. Let me look here. Yeah, none are, none are climate controlled. I'm sorry, I, I thought you meant the entire facility.
So currently the?
Currently, there's no, no climate control.
And our request would be 60% of the new construction. Is there a percentage that does work out of that 60%? You're saying 60% doesn't work. Is there a percentage that does?
Climate control, just the cost to build it would push, push this project, especially with all the other requirements for us to do it. One thing I would like to add to that is that you wouldn't be able to tell the climate controlled buildings from the non-climate controlled buildings, just the way that they're designed. They'd be almost identical. The only difference is that you would just have garage doors on the outside of the building, and even some climate controlled design would still have those doors on the outside as well.
I have one question on the masonry fence, the one that's to the south adjacent to the bank. Do you know what the length of that fence is? Is that approximately 200 feet? Is that how we came up with that?
I would say, judging by what's on here, it's about 180 feet.
Okay. So you are still proposing the fence along the north side to be masonry for the first 200 feet, and then we're, just to clarify, it's the wood that goes around after that, correct?
Correct, after, after the masonry fence.
Okay.
You're verifying 200 feet on the north side?
Correct.
Good.
And, and 200 feet, give or take, I'm showing that the, the building on the north is 105, or 155 feet long, and then I would say to add about another 40 to, probably another 40 feet.
Okay, great, great questions, great clarification. Any others?
We certainly appreciate you being here this evening. Thanks for making the trip happen.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. And if I, if you have any more questions, then no.
Any other individuals that'd like to speak from the public on item 7C? Now's your opportunity. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Mr. Kettner, can you come back up, sir? Council had some, some conversation, and hopefully you were able to take some notes, either mental or written. Counsel, would you like Tim to restate the options that were presented and preliminarily approved to by the applicant? To, to make sure we've, we've got everything aligned?
Good idea.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Mr. Kettner?
So as contained in your packet, they will complete items one through nine. We will remove, item five will be deleted. In regards to the timeframe on item nine, that will be reduced to nine months timeframe. And the fencing, the, the, the front will be a masonry combination, masonry with a wrought iron look decorative fence in the front, 200 foot of new masonry on the north side along the Montessori school, that side where it will transition to wood, which will be a wood fence with the poles on the inside capped on top for the remainder of the, the north side along the, the backside or the east side. And then again, wood will be matching back up to the existing masonry fence on the south side.
Counsel, is that stated accurately based on our conversation?
Yes.
Advocate, could you come forward just for one second? Can you confirm that this concurs with what you agreed with and that you're comfortable with all these items as amended?
It does.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else on this item? It's an action item, if that is your, okay. Motion for approval is clarified and presented by Mr. Kettner.
Yes.
By Matt Tiscus. Second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion on item 7C before we vote on it? Okay, we'll vote on 7C. Please indicate yea or nay on 7C, please. That item passes. We're going to shift down to 7D, which is to hold a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance O 2021-57, a request for zoning map amendment to change the zoning from C1 Commercial to single-family, 7.5, single-family, 7.5 residential for one residential lot on a 4.990 acre tract of land located at 1306 South Bowie Drive, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2021-0011. Welcome back.
Mayor and council, you have in your packets the complete staff report in regards to this rezoning request from C1, single-family, or C1 Commercial, General Commercial, to single-family, 7.5 residential. This request went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their October 13th, 2021 regular meeting, with a recommendation from staff for approval of zoning request of 1306 South Bowie Drive. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously for O to recommend approval of this. of this zone change from commercial to single family seven five. And if you have any questions, staff would be glad to answer any.
Any staff questions on seven D before we have a public hearing? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Let's have our public hearing on item seven D. We don't have any speaker cards filled out, but it is a public hearing that's being open at this time. We'd like to take anybody from the floor that would like to speak specifically on item seven D. Now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on seven D. Counsel, any conversation, questions? This is an action item. Motion for approval by Councilman Cleveland, seconded by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion or comments before we take a vote on seven D? Okay, let's vote on it. Please indicate yea or nay at this time. Seven D passes. Let's move down to item eight, which is staff reports. Eight A is a quarterly update regarding the downtown bypass project. Welcome, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
We also appreciate your service to our country.
Oh, yes, sir.
Before you get started tonight, thank you.
Welcome. Mayor and counsel, Chad Marvick, Capital Projects, got an update on our downtown bypass phase one, quarterly update for you. So the timeline you see here has been our target schedule, it's what I showed you the last meeting. It represents a categorical exclusion or a CE, environmental process, and it's what we've been operating off of to date. The star you see there shows where we are today on that schedule. Now, back at the May council meeting, we discussed the possibility of Tech Dot requiring a more in-depth environmental assessment, an EA, which our consultant estimates to follow the timeline you see here. Since my last update to you, Tech Dot has made the EA process a requirement. So from this point forward, we'll be tracking the project along this timeline, and I'll go into a little more detail on that. Excuse me. What you see here in pink, the additional six to eight months with that timeline that we anticipate is added to the project schedule, and that, that's for a number of items with alternative analysis. Now, the quarterly activity, activity that we've done over the last quarter is a continuation of meetings with Tech Dot District in Austin, along with the area office. We've also set up monthly status meetings with our points of contact with Tech Dot to go over the project. Of course, continuous work with the design team and, and our environmental team. Final survey data was collected and a draft traffic analysis was prepared by Tech Dot. That's the additional analysis they were going to do. We continue to receive data from our historic groups and citizens throughout this quarter, and we also worked to pull project history information from our archives, and that's requested by the state as part of the EA process. With that survey data, Kimley Horn analyzed vehicle geometry, like turning movements. It performed analysis on capacity of the roadways and potential signals, and we began preparation of the alternative analysis effort. Now, the Tech Dot alternative analysis is really the key difference in the EA process. Because of the project's size and scope, Tech Dot's requiring our consultant to go back through the city's history and concepts of the project, along with any new considerations the state wants to analyze, and that's to validate how we got to where we are today. And that process is actually done to the state's discretion. So deliverables this quarter include the completion of the survey, that field survey, but mainly consists of confirmation from the state on traffic modeling, geometry, and the environmental process. Planner for our future activity, most of the effort's going to be on the EA requirements, that alternative analysis, and we're going to incorporate any data from that analysis into the traffic model that Tech Dot has drafted. As you know, we've got some great work going on in the northeast part of downtown. We're targeting the northwest part of downtown, so the coordination of those efforts are also part of our work over this next quarter. There's also an update I'll be submitting to you on the AFA, the funding agreement, and that's basically because Tech Dot required a breakout of the project from one project number to three project numbers. That's part of their accounting requirements, not necessarily a time delay, but something that you will see from me in the future. We'll have additional effort on environmental, historic, and project archive information, part of that alternative analysis. An additional localized truck traffic info will be collected. We'll also provide Tech Dot with financial, financial information, and that's to show them how the project costs break out among the three project numbers that we're- Aside from the environmental assessment work, we'll work towards a draft pavement design, consider any traffic pattern changes or bike pet accommodations, all part of the alternative analysis. Kimley Horn's targeting a completion of the first draft alternative analysis in the next week, and we plan to submit that to Tech Dot and schedule a meeting with them to go over the work that we've done to date. So we expect the state to finalize their traffic model, and Kimley Horn will prepare that preliminary pavement design also. Do we look ahead at the next meetings? I'll be in front of you in January, then April and July, and provide you with more updates. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
We got a few, if you could back up to the changeover in the schedule, add the EA for me. And so currently, we're doing environmental study, and we've been asked by Tech Dot to do a more extensive environmental study. If we're doing an environmental study, why can those two not overlap?
Well, and the way I depicted it here probably indicates the wrong thing. So that is actually one environmental process, I'm sorry. So I, I just wanted to show you here, compared to the previous schedule, what's been added as far as we can-
And so is that additional time by Tech Dot driven by meeting schedules, a timeline they create? Is it based around items we have to do, being estimated our time, what it's going to take us to do it? Or is there something else that fits in that structure that creates that six to eight months?
Right, so our consultants estimate, and this is aggressive, this is, we're trying to approach it aggressively as we can. The estimate is that the submittals back and forth with Tech Dot, when we're submitting these alternatives, improving up the comparisons between alternatives, vetting the work that we've done, it's hard to anticipate with their discretion how far they'll make us go, but six to eight months is a, is kind of typical for this project, is what we're told, so.
Something that would be, sorry, something that'd be extremely important to me in this process would be making sure we, may have already done this, but making sure we have all of Tech Dot's meetings that we need to be scheduled out on a calendar, and that we recognize as we're going what needs to be completed before those meetings. What we don't want to have happen, which has happened in the past, is we didn't prepare or meet a deadline of a meeting, or maybe didn't have anything. Tech Dot, I don't know how often they meet, but it's not extremely frequent that you can get in. So when you miss a date, maybe complete with our work the day after, but now we lose a month because we're waiting on the next meeting. So I think it's very important for us as a group to recognize the dates of the meetings that we have to have certain items prepared for in order to not miss that schedule.
Yes, sir.
Well said. Any other comments on the item? Mayor Pro Tim?
Question, and these guys probably already know all this. Let, let me make sure I understand what, what you're saying is, with this additional environmental factors coming in that we have to look at, it then creates an analysis or an alternative for alternatives. What, what does that change in, in the overall scope of the project itself?
Right, so basically, remember in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, we had a number of public meetings. We actually vetted five options, I believe, at that point, and compared the alternatives. That's really what Tech Dot's wanting us to revisit with them under their discretion and consideration, to kind of prove that up, and really to document through the EA process, because a categorical exclusion doesn't necessarily document all that effort. So that's part of the reason they're having it.
Is there any way that there could be a stop by, by Tech Dot that says, hey, stop, we, we don't like, you haven't proven this up to us?
Well, that's the process that we're entering right now. So, you know, at any point, their discretion on what they would like to see from us is really what we're attacking with the team. So trying to anticipate what their, what their task is for is what our consultants are, you know, professionals at. So, yes, they do have a substantial control over the project and what they consider, but at this time, we don't see that being an issue.
Those are great questions. Any others? Counsel, we're hearing quarterly updates on this with the six to eight month additional information being required, including the next three months as the holiday season, other things. Do we want to have, schedule an update for three months? Do we want to go to four, or five, or six months here? Just to let staff know what our expectation is. But I certainly don't want to have a report if we're not expecting action as, as of today in ninety days. What are your thoughts on that?
I was already having the same thought. At, at what point do you think that there will be progress to report?
You know, when we're talking about quarterlies, and I can anticipate those Tech Dot meetings, and they're, they are pretty fluid as far as us preparing drafts, getting their feedback, preparing more home documents. I think if we targeted the April meeting, you know, I should have substantial information to bring back to you by then. If I have it earlier than then, we can always add an additional update earlier than that.
Councilman Cleveland, you, you were concerned about the timeline.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm still, I'm still concerned with it. I'm fine with waiting for a little bit longer for an update. I mean, if we're updating nothing, we're wasting everybody's time. I do think it's worth mentioning, I, I do believe you guys are working hard, I do, you are up against a long obstacles to overcome, but this project has continually found problem after problem, and it just starts kind of aggravating people after a while that it's taking this much to get through the process. I would like to see us stick to a schedule somewhere along the way instead of always having something added to it. I hope this is the last rendition of the, of the, of the schedule, and I hope we stick to it. I mean, whatever's caused it, it's fair to say, I won't disappoint it, hang out, but it is what it is where we are. I really want us to sit down, put our thinking caps on, and make sure we see what obstacles are yet to come. It feels like we, we look at it, we talk about it, we think we have it all under, under our thumb, we know what's coming, and something else comes up. And so somewhere along the way, we have to look at ourselves and say, are we missing something on the planning side that we're not seeing these things? I know y'all brought EA before, so it's been brought up before, but-
Hearing your, your thoughts on that, you know, are you comfortable with a five-to-six month window on a report? For your comfort, would you rather them come back in ninety days?
I'm fine with five or six. I mean, they're going to come back, and it's all environmental studies, all it's really going to be is where they're at with environmental study. I mean, as long as they're chatting with James, and James is keeping us updated on progress and making sure that's moving.
Down here, anybody? Timeline for meetings and other thoughts?
I'm fine with the, the timeline, I, with the caveat that should they come back and find another issue that they want to address that we update a little bit sooner.
Absolutely. Mr. Tiscus?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, April, April is fine with me.
So we'll see in six months, something changes, transitions, or there's new information, we sure love to have a report in the interim.
Yes, sir.
You okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for working through that, Counsel. Eight B, if we can go ahead and move to eight B, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Eight B is quarterly Weatherford Public Safety Building Construction Update. Director of Public Safety, Lance Arnold.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Lance Arnold, Director of Public Safety. And I am pleased to report to you that we began this project or broke ground about six months ago, and we have, we've had quite a bit of activity at the site. But I wanted to kind of give you a brief snapshot of some of the timeline and budgets so you kind of know where we are. We've had a lot. The last time I was here, if you remember, I showed you pictures of the slab that had just been poured. And so the pictures you'll see after this are dramatically different than just the slab on the ground. But some of the milestones we do have coming up is we have the, the main public safety building dry-in occurring in December, permanent power in January. Those are really important milestones on the interior of the work being completed. The support building has already begun, and you'll see a picture of that, but that dry-in in February, the support HVAC in March, and then you can kind of see looking towards an overall project substantial completion in September of next year. So we have officially crossed the less than one-year mark to moving into the building. So far, we've expended seven point two million dollars, but just as a reminder, you all approved the guaranteed maximum price. We are still well on target and on task with that guaranteed maximum price. But just to kind of give you an idea, that represents thirty-eight percent of that guaranteed maximum price. The same with contingencies, we are still well in our contingencies. And one of the notable things that occurred within the last couple of weeks is we did select our furniture dealer. All that does become important because as we start to design that furniture in all of those spaces, considerably larger space than we're in now, they will build that, and, and the timing of that being delivered on-site and set up and all that affects our moving in, obviously. And so we are progressing with that. Now to the really fun part is some of the pictures. So that is the, the main part of the building, that second-story multipurpose room that you can see there. You see some of the, the weather protection that's going on, on that, and then you see the storm shelter to the right of that picture, but that's on the north side of the building, Fort Worth Highway side. Next, you see kind of, again, that second-story building, but as it connects to that community corridor, and, and how far they've kind of developed in that, ninety, about ninety percent of the parking lot has already been poured. That's important for a couple of reasons, but primarily keeps the dust down on windy days as we start to experience and things like that, and just makes an overall better environment if you need to respond there from a public safety perspective or anything like that. That's, gives you a really good shot of the rough litter limestone that's on the Area B that we call, but it's a property in evidence section. And so that is the, what the matching side, the storm shelter on the other side will have that rough litter limestone as well. And then the back, they've began, this is on the south side of the building, looking back towards Fort Worth Highway, but they have bricked that entire, and they're starting down, have already begun bricking down the east side of the building there. And then that, that gives you kind of a back view of the, the middle part of that structure there. And then finally, as I mentioned, the Support Services Building has begun, and, and just as a reminder, that building serves as storage for some of our fleet, like our UTVs, ATVs, things like that, also large property evidence, arson evidence that we don't necessarily want in the main building, and things like armory and, and weapons cleaning, again, some of those tasks that we don't necessarily want inside the main building. So with that, I'll be available for any questions that are coming.
Questions for Chief Arnold? We appreciate the update and look forward to seeing you in ninety days with more information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, let's move on down to item nine on the agenda, which is future agenda items. Any fan, Counsel? Future agenda items? For Trotalk?
Have none.
Item ten on the agenda, citizen comments on non-agenda items. Is there anybody from the floor that would like to speak on any item that we've not discussed previously tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to item eleven on the agenda, which is adjournment. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder for adjournment, seconded by Kevin Cleveland. We'll vote on that here in just a minute. Please indicate yea or nay.